Welcome to the Elyria City School Board of Education meeting for November 3, 2021. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen here. Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. For introductions, first of all, absent tonight is Board Member Elaine Segwin. Next is our Vice President Jim Bax, seated to my right. To my left is Board Member Greg Elick. Seated next to him is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. And to my further left is Superintendent Anne Sloss. And all the way to the end is our Treasurer Joy Clickinger. And I am Board President Annie Karstoffen. Now, we will move down. We have no board recognition or presentation tonight. We will go to visitors' comments. First of all, we have three signed up for the five minutes, and then we have one signed up for the 15 minutes. First, we will go with the 15 minutes. Mr. Andrew Smith requests 15 minutes to address the board.
Before we get started, I wish you would keep your comments civil tonight without the language.
Absolutely. I hope that there's no use of sheriffs to silence parents that are have dissent against the school board this evening.
Oh, if they break the rules, there will be.
Well, I don't.
Like you did.
Anyway, so I would like to know, I guess for starters, when the school board first decided to start posting meetings on YouTube? Because from what I could gather, it's been years that it's been done by the school. It's just a common practice. Who on the board would have control over something like that?
Is this a question answer?
No. You're here to address the board?
And I am, and I'm asking questions. I have some grievances about what you guys have done to me for speaking my mind in this building. So I would like those issues addressed, and we can start with, when did you guys first make the decision and in what form to put the school board meetings on the Internet? Because they had been for years, even before the pandemic, regularly posted online. So I just want to know if any of you have any knowledge of how that policy came about or who authorized the institution of that? Because every meeting was posted online prior to September 5th for the last three to five years on the school's YouTube channel? And then just so happened to be the last meeting in September, first meeting in October, and then this last meeting in October haven't been posted online for public consumption yet? And I'm just wondering why? And who made that decision? And if it was a part of an executive committee? Or if it was part of a public process to decide not to put those videos online?
Okay. You can continue with your.
No, I would like an answer to that. Because I've come here as a parent to talk to you guys about very important and pressing things in the education of our children. And I feel like that's something that's being ignored, censored, and then you used a sheriff to pull me out of the building simply for asking why you aren't putting school board meetings on the Internet. So there's something that's obviously making each one of you individually uncomfortable in some way about this entire process of why children have masks and where it goes from here? So I would just really like to know who made the decision not to put the school board meeting online? Because that's why you dragged me out of the building in the first place two weeks ago.
It is not our policy to respond. So in the past, if you're here to address the board, you addressed the board, and we will take your thoughts into consideration, but we have not, it is not necessarily our, it is not a question-answer session here. And your time is still ticking as well.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So there's no one that's willing to say, "I said, don't put the school board meetings online." Because there's someone here that was historically for years doing so. And then when I came in here to ask questions about, to my public officials about the conduct in schools in regards to children and the wearing of masks, that all of a sudden was good enough to get pulled from the Internet and pulled from the actual school's public discussion and ability for parents to see it. So I'm just wondering why that stopped? Who authorized it to stop? And is this even going to be put online for parents to view and see? Because this will be the fourth meeting in a row. It'll be eight weeks now since the school board meeting has been put online. So why has that happened? Who is the person that is responsible for putting that up there? Are they sick? Is there something that's making them negligent in their duties? Is there someone else that could assist in that function? These are questions I'm asking elected officials, and you guys are just sitting there silently.
Because we've already expressed to you that this is not a question-and-answer session, and you're not going to lead us into one. So if there is another issue, you can move on to your next issue.
No, this is part of the issue. Is that somehow you guys feel that you're above answering to parents when they ask simple questions? To the point that you'll remove the school board videos from the Internet where you've historically posted them about seven to 10 days after the meeting, which is usually about a week to four days before the next one? And that's just arbitrarily been suspended. Those meetings get anywhere from 80 to about 200 views, and there's somewhere between 2,500 and 3,500 students in the district. So roughly 8% to 10% of parents actually watch that to be informed about the choices that you guys are making that are impacting the students. And so I would like a little transparency and accountability from the elected officials as to why these videos aren't being posted on the Internet anymore. When a father can show up here and ask simple questions for five minutes and then it gets rejected from other parents viewing, that's called censorship. And I would like to know who on the school board is making those decisions to not do that? So none of you are willing to even answer or address a question from a parent? Last week, you guys discussed spending $24 million. Four weeks ago, you guys discussed spending $10 million on fire renovation. Are those topics that parents shouldn't hear about? You guys had questions about the process. Don't you think parents would like answers to those questions, regardless of what happens in between or before the end of the meeting thereof? So that's common for school boards just to hide the discussion of spending $34 million from the public? Because those were the other things that were in those meetings. It wasn't just one parent coming forward saying, "Hey, something's not okay." So I would like to know who and why those meetings got pulled? Why those aren't being posted? Is it something to do with the money that you guys don't want displayed? Is it something to do with me speaking about masks and parental consent for children? These are very simple questions that have hopefully simple answers. Hopefully, there's just someone that wasn't able to do it. Because executive sessions and discussions of school board policy and actions aren't allowed to be done in private. As far as I'm concerned, if you guys want to choose to not put something on the Internet, there has to be a public discussion and a vote about it. You can't just pull publicly available historical record away from parents when it's something that almost 10% of the community of parents that send children to these schools view on a regular basis. Did anyone think about that before they made the decision not to post those school board meetings on the Internet? Will this school board meeting get posted on the Internet? Will you put it on the school's YouTube channel like you have every other school board meeting except the prior three? So you're willing to address me to tell me that you're not going to address me, but you're not willing to actually talk to me about the situations that I'm presenting to you? Is that kind of what I'm taking away from all this? That people are willing to make a comment to say, "No, we're not going to make a comment"? That's wonderful. I really appreciate the way the board conducts themselves when a parent comes forward with a grievance. Because the other thing I wanted to talk about a few weeks ago before I got pulled out by a sheriff for asking why school board meetings weren't getting posted online was the circumstance that happened with Mark Jesse. And if the school had done anything to look back at previous student history to see if there had been any reports that had happened during his time as a high school choir teacher for almost a decade at Elyria High. So this is just normal, then? There's just no response? Where a parent can come and ask direct questions about why censorship is taking place from the school in regards to them speaking and the spending of millions, tens of millions of their children's dollars, and parents don't get to view that on the Internet anymore? And there's no comment by public officials? No one's willing to say that they did or didn't say, "Put those videos online" or "Take them down"? Because the last meeting that got posted again was September 5th. Every other meeting for years, it got put on there. The board's policies aren't easy to find. It's not easy to see what you guys say parents can and can't do at these meetings. And I think it's pretty irreprehensible and tyrannical that people can sit up here and try to pretend like they can decide the fates of people's childrens without listening to the individual's voices that set forward to speak to them. You guys have refused to allow the public to see the last three meetings. It's been now eight weeks since the school board meeting was posted on the Internet, on the school's YouTube channel. And apparently, no one feels any sense of responsibility or concern for that fact. And that's pretty disgusting considering you guys represent the people in this room, that you represent the children that go to your school. So there's no one that feels a sense of accountability for why this information's not being publicly disclosed to parents on the Internet? Nobody that's willing to say a single thing? Wonderful. I concede the rest of my time.
Signed up for five minutes. I have Dawn, and I'm not going to attempt this last name.
Wana Hato.
How do you pronounce it?
Wana Hato. Kind of like Wanatako?
Okay. And your, state your address.
311 Golf Road, Elyria, Ohio.
Okay.
Okay. Should I get going?
Yes.
Obviously, my name is Dawn. I've been a resident for Elyria for about 20 years now. Obviously, I don't, you've never seen me. I don't get involved with this stuff. I like people to leave me alone, mind my business, and move on about my life. But everything this past two years, I think you can see, has been, hm. So I wanted to start first with the Gospel, Ephesians. "For we wrestle not against the flesh and blood, against principalities, against powers, against rulers of the darkness of this world, but against spiritual wickedness in high places." And that's what we wrestle against right now. I'm all about facts and data. I don't like feelings, okay? And emotions and stuff like that. I like facts and data. I'm a biology major from Cleveland State University. I take care of both my parents. My mother is COPD, diabetic heart disease. So these two years have been very important to me, obviously, because I take care of her and I love her very much. So nothing about this is about health and safety. These kids wearing masks all day in school and doing what they're doing, it's not about health and safety. I believe you guys get a nice amount of COVID funds to do the state mandates and go along with what the state says. And so they're just using common sense that we know. Are any of us here wearing masks? Are any of you afraid? I'm not afraid. I haven't worn a mask in two years. When it was mandated, I never wore one. No one ever said anything to me. People minded their business. People elected to do what they wanted to do and moved along and let other people do what they wanted to do. I checked today. We've had 600 deaths from COVID in two years in Elyria. We have over 300,000 residents. That's not a very high death rate for us to sit here and put these masks on these children all day. Again, are you guys really afraid of this thing? You're all here sitting next to each other. It doesn't seem like you're very afraid. So again, I don't understand why this decision is made to put masks on our children all day, especially when kids really, they have almost no risk from this. Really, the risk is for people like my mother. And I don't expect 99% of the people to do all this stuff just to protect my mother. I will protect my mother. And I've been doing this for 15 years. These past two years are new to you guys. This is not new to me. This has been my life for 15 years, protecting my mother. And you know, everybody's like all freaked out about these vaccines. You know what I found with my mother? That when I stopped giving her flu and pneumonia vaccines, that we stopped going to the hospital every single year, once or twice a year, with her pulse ox down in the 60s, the 70s, and the 80s. Okay? Since then, we have never been there. I stopped them, and she goes there for stints in her heart because she's not a person that can have the quadruple bypass. She eats because it will probably kill her, because she has COPD. But, and like these past two years, we've been in the hospital twice, twice, for stints in her heart. And you would think with such a deadly pandemic and someone in her condition that she would probably catch it and die. Not once. You got nurses coming in her rooms, doctors coming in her rooms, all these people coming in her rooms, the people giving her food, her insulin shots, her breathing treatments, all these different people. And do you really think that a mask is stopping that? A virus is one to two microns. Do you know how small that is? What about last year when the CDC in California said, "These masks do not help for smoke with the fires. They don't help. You have to have the respirators, the ones with the..." Do you know what, do you know smoke particles are six to 10 micron? So you're saying that it doesn't help for smoke particles that are six to 10 micron, but it does help for a virus that is one to two microns or less? This is just ridiculous. What are we doing? Is the money worth it? Because that's what I feel like. I feel like we're being paid off to muzzle our kids and shoot fear into them for something that they, they have almost no risk of dying from. This is a flu. I have nailed my mother's doctors with this the past two years. I have doctors that will literally look down at the floor and spin like squirrels and say, "We don't have to talk about this. We don't have to talk about this." Really? That I just paid $600 out of my pocket to make sure I have ivermectin because these hospitals will not give it. Oh, ivermectin doesn't work, does it? Google NIH. What's NIH? The National Health Institute, right? Dr. Fauci. And then type in their search box, Table 2E, and it will have the antiviral, what do they call it? The antiviral and approved COVID treatments. Number one is remdesivir. Number two is ivermectin. Dr. Fauci's own NIH says so, that this is an approved method for COVID. Yet, and I have not one doctor that will prescribe it to me. I have to go pay $600 out of my pocket to get a mom-and-pop pharmacy that will fill it for me. Because they want people like my mother gone. Okay? This is disgusting. I don't know what we're doing this past two years, this political nonsense. I'm done. I hate politics. And I have never been more political in the last year in my entire life. I never even voted until 2020. Never even voted. That's how much I hate politics.
Your five minutes are up.
What are we doing? What are we doing to our kids?
All righty. Next, I have Christian A. Christian, please state your address.
I'm from, out of the county, but I was very supportive, Brad. I'm from Columbus.
What's your address?
165, oh, sorry, 2820 Cooper Ridge Road.
Okay. Usually it's written, 2820 Cooper Ridge Road.
Yes.
Okay. You can proceed. Go right ahead.
Thank you for having me. So mandates have been brought up, and specifically mask mandates. When it comes to the chance of contracting SARS-CoV-2, sorry, SARS-CoV-2, it has an R and O of what we suspect to be of five or six. That's pretty high. It basically high-fives its way around. It makes rounds. So it has been predicted that everyone's going to come in contact with this virus at some point in their life. However, if it develops into COVID-19, that's the disease that it could potentially develop into, that's a whole different game. Depending on your age range, it seems that older individuals, that we're talking 70s plus, has the highest rate of contracted, or being susceptible to contracting to the point of COVID-19 and lethality as a result of that. But when it comes to age ranges under 30, it seems that the likeliness of developing all the way up to COVID-19 is less than 0.005%. It's pretty much nonexistent for anyone under the age of 30 across the board, and this is throughout the entire world. The data that I looked into was the UK data, and they had some of the highest rates of death as a result of COVID-19 anywhere in the world. Other countries have also, or aside from the UK, other countries, I believe it was Denmark, has accepted that COVID-19 is just endemic at this point. It is no longer something that is going to be geared towards eradication. It's just going to be accepted into things like the flu. It's going to be understood as, perhaps it can be reduced into the realms of the comac cult, but there's no, there's no real force in fighting it anymore for some of those countries. Other countries, like that of India and the region of Uttar Pradesh, they've gone to the realm of trying to treat COVID-19 preemptively with things like vitamin B, CD, zinc, ivermectin, paracetamol, and dicicline as just part of a care kit that they would just give people because they didn't have vaccines at all presented, but they would give everyone in their residencies these care kits. And they saw overwhelming success with not only pretty much crushing, they didn't even flatten the curve. They crushed it. Like, as a job well done, they did an amazing job. So when it comes to understanding what to do for kids, the evidence that seems to have piled on is simply let them be because they have no risk of contracting SARS-CoV-2 to it developing into COVID-19. It's just not a risk category for them. For those who might have severe comorbidities such as diabetes, could have cancers, or even, or anything that could result in just SARS-CoV, just give them that extra push into the realm of death, that, of course, definitely needs to be addressed. But when it comes to things like masks, as the former speaker was mentioning, the particle size in of itself, far too small. They're just going to blow through it. Of course, it does help with like ballistic-style sneezing and coughing, but overall, and that made sense for last year, too. For when we discovered that this is brand new, no one knows what to expect of it. It makes all the sense in the world. It's like, hey, we should at least try something to help stop because we don't know what we're up against. Could be the next plague. But we're now in 2021 of November of this year, and we have the data to help understand what we're fighting against. Knowledge is power. So for forward and concerning of all mandates, it's never a good idea to push people into doing something they don't want to, especially when life is, it's not about just negligencing and taking risks for no care or concern. It's just about living life to its fullest. Living under fear, who wants that? Especially for something that now we understand exactly what it is. We know who it targets, how to mitigate it, and how to even just completely kind of evaporate it into just being human. Thank you.
And lastly, I have James M. Allen. James, would you please state your address?
137 Notre Dame Circle, Elyria, Ohio.
Thank you, James.
Hi, everyone. I've been a lifetime resident of Elyria, and I'm currently a graduate student for Cleveland State. And I came here to understand, like, the policies and everything of what the school board meetings are about as part of a requirement for my program, as well as to participate more in understanding how to help my local district. And I'm looking to be in the field of special education in the next semester. I'm getting ready to be doing either practical or student teaching come January. And I wanted to support my local district and understand what it entails to be here. And that's why I came. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Moving forward, we have board member discussion items. Are there any items by any board members? You don't have any? Okay.
No, I just wanted to say that, as in the past, it's always been that if we get calls to the administration office about any of our policies or anything like that, obviously, you guys are available to answer questions at the board office, correct? Nothing's changed, though, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to make a, thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a comment that, you know, obviously, we're dealing with, it's evidenced by our speakers today, we're dealing with a, you know, with a fairly complex and emotionally charged topic. I don't think there's anyone in this room that doesn't long to go back to a pre-COVID situation in our schools. And I'm sure I can speak for the board on that as well. I guess with the new, with the latest number release of new cases, the number, the numbers that are being reported in our county, those declining numbers, that with the availability of vaccines from, what, five-year-olds and up? I think that, you know, we should be, we should be moving in a position where we can get back to some sort of, I don't know if I'll ever call it normal, but certainly something akin to a pre-COVID environment. But I think we've heard enough. We've heard enough, and like, from people who are concerned, and we're out, we all But I'm just hoping that the data continues on a good trend out of the, out of our local, our local public board of health, and that people take advantage. People take advantage as they see fit in terms of if we can get children start becoming vaccinated, and that helps, and that helps reduce the incidence. If that's your choice to do that, that's great. But at least with the numbers, with the declining numbers now, I'm encouraged by what I see.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to that. Do I have a line?
No, that's not a part. No.
I would like to ask. I would like to respond to that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. Moving on.
I didn't want to bring something earlier. I think it's also very encouraging with what our superintendent has been sharing us from the Health Department. And along the lines with what you said, with the reduced cases, that, again, the board's going to do what it thinks is right. And I'm very encouraged with all the information you're sharing with us. I'm really looking forward to continuing to get that information and hope we are able to go in that direction. Appreciate everything you guys have done and all the information that you've acquired for us.
Thank you. Thank you to Board Member Bax and Board Member Elick for your comments. I appreciate them both. We're moving on to item number F, which is the meeting minutes. Our minutes have been posted. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to review them. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Record of Proceeding for the meeting for October 20 of 2021 as detailed in enclosure F1. May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions? No question. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carried. We're moving on now to G, which is Treasurer Action Item. Madam Treasurer?
Yes, I just have one item, and it's to approve the attached list of purchase orders to comply with our purchasing procedures.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the recommendations by the Treasurer as presented?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Jim Bax. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions?
Just for the record, the reason this is on here is because of the time, is that correct, Madam Treasurer?
Right.
It's been on the 30 days? Okay, great, that's the only question.
Okay, thank you. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. We have Treasurer Other Actions.
Yes, I'd like to appoint, ask for approval to appoint Board Members Michael Gebhardt and Jim Bax as primary representatives, and Greg Elick, Elaine Segwin, and Annie Karstafen as alternatives for an expulsion hearing.
May I please have a motion for the items recommended by the Treasurer as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Are there any questions? This is for November 17th, so, the next meeting. No questions? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Moving forward to K, I believe.
Just let me mention a couple things, and it has to do, a Capitol Conference coming this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Your name badges are at your stations. I also gave you an event listing. If anything comes up between now and then, I'll shoot you an email, and if you want to look at anything in advance, there is a, an app that you can download on your phones or your iPads that's pretty nice.
Okay.
Otherwise, you'll receive your conference booklet once, once you get there.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to K, which is the Superintendent Action Items.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
First of all, to approve the overnight field trip of the robotics team, a high school robotics team in Indianapolis. I believe that's not this weekend, but next weekend. Also, to approve the contract with the STEPS Education Group. To approve the overnight athletic field trip for the Alaria High Boys Basketball Team, starting scrimmage, I can't believe it's already basketball season. To approve the agreement of, with Inside Academy for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. And that concludes my action items.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Superintendent as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gebhardt. May I please have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Are there any questions or concerns?
You have a quick question.
Go right ahead.
The Insight Academy, can you just kind of brief us on, on that? It's a little confusing the way it read, what exactly they're...
Sure, it's working with some of our special needs students. Mrs. Black, you want to be on that?
Yeah, it's a separate facility that addresses kids with more intensive, severe needs. We only have programs that go up to moderate to intensive needs, and when we have kids that need more services available to them, we have to outsource those, and Inside Academy is one, so.
Okay, and is this a new one?
It is a newer one in Westlake. It's the first time we've used them as a placement. They've always been using their services the last couple years for what they call a BCBA, it's a board certified behavior analysis, to come out, and they work with our kids before we place them to see if, if those are appropriate. So it's, they've just more recently opened their doors to accepting kids on, instead of just a consulting service.
So will this mean kids will go to, less to somewhere else since they're going here then, or how's that going to work?
So the district places them there instead because they need those more intensive services.
I see, okay.
In agreement with the parent, it's a whole process that's followed through under IDEA.
And do we have any other vendors that we use for this level?
We do. STEPS is one, which is the other one.
Okay.
We have another student that was recently, that was one of the decisions that was made. There is PEP that specializes in both autism and different, different disabilities, so there's many, many across the region that specialize in different things, and so when, depending on the student's needs, we take all those into consideration.
Okay, great. I don't remember seeing this one, that's why I wanted to...
Yeah, it's due as far as placement purposes.
Great, okay, thank you.
No other questions? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. All righty, then next we'll have Personnel Action Items recommended by the Superintendent.
Okay. First, to approve the resignation of the following classified administrative staff. I do want to say Mrs. Barney Air wanted to, to say she loved her time here, but for various reasons had to resign. To approve the resignation of the certified staff as detailed below. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff as listed below. As you can see, we have another substitute teacher and started doing our long-term subs for building some coverage. To approve the payment of $50 an hour for the school tutoring, this is part of that after-school plan through the S R dollars. To approve the following district and non-district game workers for the 21-22 school year. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts as listed below. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff members. To approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified staff members. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff members. And that concludes my Personnel Action Items.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. May I please have a motion to approve the Personnel Items recommended by the Superintendent as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions?
Just real quick, is the tutoring for all grades or that were...
So this is the first layer, this is elementary.
Okay.
We wanted to get them into place quickly first, and then she's working, Mrs. Matthews is working on, I think, the high school and middle school.
Okay. I'd like to maybe down the road, get a better understanding of how we're kind of, is it purely on grade need, is it, or grading needs, how the children are doing, or how we're going about?
Sure, the students that will qualify for tutoring is based on our data.
Okay.
Their data that is classroom-based or vendor assessment, so obviously, the more tutors we have, the more spots we are able to provide to students. So it just varies by school based on their data.
And is it like an hour a week? Is it as much as needed, or?
So it's an hour after school, 3:30 to 4:30, and depending, again, on our availability with tutors, some students will come two days a week, some will come four days a week, and there are some that will just come one day a week. So part of the piece that we are looking at also is transportation, so we are providing transportation to those students that would qualify for transportation after school as well. So the, the middle school will be next, and the high school has a, a plan in place that we just have to work out a few kinks on.
Good, okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. No other questions? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Yes, real quickly, yesterday, we had our professional development day, and I have to send out big kudos to academic services, pupil services, IT services, all the services that put professional development together. We also had a huge Walmart shopping day. Thank you to our friends from EEAs who helped sort and, and give away. Walmart gave us eight pallets of school supplies.
Wow.
That all the teachers could come and take for their classrooms, which was, thank you, Walmart, and thank you to everyone who helped with that. But the professional development day was really, you know, we looked at mental health strategies to use in the classroom, but also mental health strategies for the staff. We had math PD, we had literacy PD, you name it, we even had yoga. I did not enter that one. But a lot of things to help with all of our needs. Also, wanted to remind everyone that November 8th, this coming Monday, is a records day, where teachers are finalizing, it's the end of quarter one already, so they're finalizing grades and getting those ready for students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board of Education. Number one is board information. Do we have any information tonight? None? Okay, number two, board policy, first reading. I would, a recommendation to approve the first reading of the following policy, Mr. Bax?
Yes, Madam President, this is, policy is basically in regards to public participation at board meetings. There is no change in the policy, but upon review, it was, there were aspects such as how to sign up. And those, and what, basically what was changed was, it was more clarification added, rather than any substance, so. So effectively, there's no change, other than it's just, it's more detailed, and it's, we believe, much clearer.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Items as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions? No? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. No executive session?
No.
Right. Okay, is there anything other to come before this board tonight?
I'd just like to say that we're very proud of our graduates, and we're always interested in hiring our graduates, too, so somebody needs to talk to Mr. Allen when he's available, so, all right? Thanks for, thanks for attending the meeting, too, and good luck at Cleveland State, so.
Very good. All righty, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Elick, second by Mr. Gebhardt. Nothing else? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
And Ms. Karstafen?
Aye, thank you. Consider yourself adjourned. Thank you.